Hi.
Oh, God, wait a minute.
Hi, for the vice chair.
What about the motion? Does it die?
Yeah.
Okay, hang on.
Okay.
Go ahead, you go.
Motion to appoint a vice chairman. I have a motion for Guy Alagro to take the vice chair. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Jamie Finley for secretary with the raise of fifty cents is what we talked about about the time.
Yep.
Need a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jamie with the fifty cent raise.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion to approve the fifty cent an hour raise for the road workers.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to set the treasurer's bond at two hundred and fifty thousand.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint Nicholas Insurance Agency as the insurance carrier.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Stephanie Farah as solicitor.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint the each group as township engineer.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion for the vacancy board, the only applicant is Rick Coruia, right?
Yes.
You have a motion for Rick Coruia for the vacancy chair?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to use First Commonwealth Bank and Northwest Savings Bank as deposit stores.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to set meeting day and time as the third Thursday of the month at seven P M.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to send three supervisors, secretary, and road foreman to the state convention with somebody designated as a voting delegate. I know I'm not going.
Hi, Mike.
Are you gonna go?
I may not.
You go, you go, Guy?
I don't know yet.
So, it's maybe me and Guy and Ronnie, maybe.
Well, somebody, one of you, if you go, will have to be the voting delegate, has to be a supervisor.
I'll take that position.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay, sewer authority, one vacancy.
I have John Bryson and Larry Lilly.
We have a motion for John Bryson for the sewer authority.
I'll make the motion.
You have a second?
Let me look at the copy here. There you get to look, each other. I'm looking at the experience part. I'm comparing the experiences with both applicants.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm a nay on John Bryson.
I'll second John Bryson.
Excuse me, one minute.
Yes.
You said you had two applicants?
Right.
Mr. Lilly said he requested to be reappointed also.
He is requested to be reappointed.
Yes.
Those are the two.
I didn't hear that.
Bryson and Lilly. Joe, I was looking at them right now.
Just Bryson was stated first.
Right, we said we had two. We usually go one at a time, that's what we do. I'm seconding for John Bryson. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion, uh, to appoint vacancy to the water board.
Linda Quinn.
That's the only one?
There should be other ones on file, too, if you look back.
They don't have them in today's.
Linda Quinn.
I'll second for Linda Quinn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Recreation Board, we have one vacancy, Nancy, that's your seat.
Your vacancy?
But you don't have an application on file, so we can't appoint you tonight, so we didn't know if you knew your seat was up or if you wanted to stay on.
Oh, no, I thought it was till twenty-three.
Okay. So, if, we don't have anybody else to put in for it tonight either, but if you want to be appointed, you just have to put an application.
Okay.
Hers is till twenty-twenty-three.
Hers is?
I thought it was. This is twenty-twenty-one.
So, is yours still?
Yeah, she only wanted one year.
Well, it's not what she wanted, it's five years.
That's what she got, she got it for twenty-twenty-one.
There's still, there's not a full four, correct?
No.
There's not a full four.
It'd be twenty-twenty-five and twenty-two.
You can't appoint someone for one year.
Oh, yeah, you get appointed to this, the, whatever term you're filling when it's my year. That's how it works.
Well, that was Mr. Hector. His did that until twenty-two.
Nancy, this is Recreation.
This is Recreation Board. Record.
Record, sorry.
That's all right.
Okay, so if you're still interested in Nancy, and I think you are, just get an application.
Yeah, I wasn't aware, I ju, I thought I resigned.
Ten days prior to the next meeting, which is not gonna be a little dark day.
Okay.
Okay, sixteen, motion to appoint Russ Brown as sewage enforcement officer.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion to appoint Todd Fantasaki as the alternate sewage officer.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it, Guy.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Jamie Finley as chief financial officer of the Township Pension Plan.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to allow the secretary to sign the year-end reports.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to allow the chairman to sign the year-end reports.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to set the mileage rate at fifty-eight and a half cents a mile.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, but you'll set rate?
Fifty-eight and a half cents.
Point five. Set by the I R F. We have a motion and a second? All in favor? Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion to require all contractors doing work for the township to have insurance.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve the J Township Fire Police assisting with any events outside of the township during twenty-twenty-two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I need an adjournment?
Yes, you just need a motion to adjourn, that's the end of the reorganization.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Reorganization session, then?
Thank you.
Meeting on December twenty-second. You can't approve those minutes because you weren't here, if you understand that, Joe.
I have a question, please.
Yeah.
The size of the clock on these minutes, that must be about eight, though. That's so small, I believe. Can we make that floor a little bit bigger in the future? That's cute.
I do it the same paper, but, yeah.
Well, no, that's fine.
Any questions on the minutes of December sixteenth? Yes, go ahead.
Are you approving the one for December twenty-second?
Uh, yeah, well, we can do them one at a time if you'd like, or we, I mean, if you have a question, you can ask a question on either one.
The one on December twenty-second should be labeled, that was a special meeting, that was not a regular meeting.
Oh, it says monthly meeting, it should be special meeting, yes, you're correct.
Nancy.
Any other questions on the minutes from previous two meetings? Can I get a?
Now, Mir, you can't decide on a special meeting because you weren't here and I was involved.
No, I was here for this.
For the, not for the special meeting.
Yes, this special meeting, I was here, yes. This was on the twenty-second.
Okay.
Members present. Guy, Richard, Guy. Okay, anyhow. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Just two meetings?
I'll make the motion.
How second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Visitors comments. You can start right in the front, which side do you want me to start with? Green?
I have a question about the water stuff.
Okay.
You know, I've been hearing rumors that, like, I don't have water and sewage at my house. You turn this over, it's gonna go on my taxes, I don't have to be paying for your water and sewage down here. Is that true?
No, no, no.
Is there a guarantee that's not gonna happen?
Yes, I mean, it has, it's gonna come out of its own account like it always has, it'll, it'll be separate from township funds.
So, my taxes ain't getting a twenty-five dollar water bill down here?
The bills pay for the services. Just like they do right now.
That's what my main thing is. You know, I didn't feel that should be done, I don't have it.
Right, no. The bills always pay for the services. Separate from the township, if you, you can even get a meeting packet, but if you look, the accounts would be separate, and there'll be a water and sewer account separate from these accounts that we are in this. That's where the billing can come in, that's where the payments will go out.
Tell them what it's gonna cost the township.
Not gonna cost the township anything.
The township has to pay the lease company.
Yeah, six hundred and fifty-five thousand.
That's what I said, tell them, tell, tell people it's gonna cost six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars a year.
We bring in nine hundred and thirty thousand plus a year in water and sewage bills, and we currently pay out six hundred and eleven thousand dollars a year in expenses. So, I mean.
A lot of people are in a habit.
And that's not even the debt, that doesn't include the debt.
A lot of people are in a habit.
There's one more question on the clock.
Go ahead, Miss Visitor's comments.
Hey, well, my mom down here at this, the home place down here, if you don't wash her toilet in two days, there's pink mold growing around it, and then black mold grows around it, this isn't within a couple of days. And I had to buy bottled water for her for everything. Why can't you drink the water here?
The water's right behind you, help yourself to some, it's freshly out of the plant today.
I'm just, don't know why.
You can drink water, it's right there behind you. Have a cup, I bought styrofoam cups today, I brought a lot of them.
I'm thirsty right now, I'm asking a serious question, there shouldn't be mold in your toilet, you should be able to drink the water.
It's toilet.
You can't even give it to your dog or doggy guy. I don't know, no, I don't.
I got water right here.
Well, the tree guy come to my house and spraying bushes, too, he wanted to spray bushes, he wouldn't drink that out of a cup neither.
There's no problem with water.
There is most certainly something wrong with the water down here.
I think it's different.
Well, I think it's wrong.
Just can tell them where the water come from? Come out of the plant, right out of the tap. Over at the water plant? Yeah.
I don't know if something else could cause that mold or not.
It's a twit.
Do you have it in your home?
I don't, but I don't know if something else could cause it or not, I don't know.
I'm just asking, I don't know why it does that.
Yeah, I don't.
Maybe something else.
I, I will go anywhere in this valley and take water out of anybody's tap, out of any hydrant, and drink it.
That's you, ask everybody in this township to buy bottled water.
I'm not saying.
Everybody in this township buys bottled water because you can't drink it.
You can drink the water, that's what I'm telling you.
I mean, D E P.
We don't wanna go to the back and forth on it, I, I mean, I, a lot of people have their opinion of the water, a lot of people drink the water, I'm drinking the water, you know?
I mean, D E P sees the reports every.
Well, I know, I know that, I just don't understand why.
I don't either.
That's happening, I don't understand what causes that.
Toilets are full of germs, to, it's the best I can tell you, I mean, I'll be more than happy to go over and pull samples out of the home.
I don't know, you work for the water company or what? I'm not saying you're doing anything wrong, I'm just saying, why is it not, you know? That's all.
I, I'll be more than happy to get samples from there and test it, see what's going on.
We all know how the government works, they'll let you drink anything, so you go by their gap, by lines, not a very good one.
I won't let you drink something that I wouldn't drink.
Okay, is that all you have for visitors' comments?
Yep.
Okay. Nancy, we're going right down the front line here.
Uh, not, no.
Okay.
All right, I'm with Houston Township, I'm the chairman of the municipal authority down here, and we were curious how this Infomarc would affect us. Since the J Township municipal authority is gonna be dissolved, are we gonna be dealing with, do you guys J Township, Township Supervisors, or are we gonna be dealing with Infomarc?
Um, as far as the contracts and things go, the legal contracts that we have, they will transfer to the township, so you need to be contracted with the township. Um, as far as service would go, it's not gonna change, you know, you already have your agree upon price, um, and you just re-signed, right? I mean, you just signed.
We don't have.
Agreement.
Well, you have the new agreement up there.
We don't have no agreement.
We have, but.
We have an agreement?
No, we've been back and forth for this for. No, we, we guys never signed anything.
Yeah, we dropped off our agreement, but we haven't.
Yeah.
But we haven't heard from you yet.
So, you're paying at the original agreement rate, is that what you're paying right now?
Correct.
Okay, but you have, you've been working towards.
They, they have our proposal, it's all filled out, we sent it to them, we're waiting for it to come back.
Okay.
That's what.
And it's gonna, that's, for right now, they're still the governing body of the authority, okay, because we're in the process of transitioning out of that, but, um, it'll, it'll take some time. So, continue to work with them like you always did, and then eventually you'll be working with the township.
Okay, and I'm assuming you guys will take, or you guys will work with Infomarc and you'll follow their advisements and it needs to have adjustments in rates or something like that?
The rates are, will be set by the township. They know the Infomarc is just the operator, they're not handling rates, the rates will be held, handled here.
Okay.
So, and you're on, you're on, you have a legal agreement right now.
Mm-hmm.
And you're tweaking that or whatever you guys are doing with that right now, um, it's still gonna be a binding legal agreement, we've had that conversation with our solicitor already, so.
So, it just, the J Township municipal authority part's gonna go away from, it's just gonna be that?
It would be like J Township.
Yeah.
Water. You know, you probably write a check to J Township water account. I don't have the exact name of the account, it doesn't exist yet.
Yeah, yeah.
And if you have, do you have other questions about it?
As we go along, you can speak more, put it that way.
Okay.
Let it, and under your mind first.
We have a representative for Infomarc in the back corner, perhaps after the meeting, even if they had questions.
Yeah, so, okay.
We'll have him up front when it comes to his current.
All right.
He gonna address the crowd.
Howie? Howton?
I, I just wanted to make it clear to everybody that the water is safe to drink, uh, whatever Patrick and stuff is here, there's a lot of issues with dirty water and everything. Well, since Donovan's come along, my own opinion, the water has jumped a hundred percent better. And if anybody has a problem with the water, please call us at the plant, leave a message. If we don't get messages, we can't come and fix the problem. Come into the township and whine and cry and tell you guys about water issues, we can't do our job.
Right.
Come to the water place, call us, I will get out to you guys, I will get on top of it. And I'm not gonna stay in the closet.
I don't know who to go.
Calm down, because, you know, I've been to the plant many, many times for issues that I have with the water. You know, listen, I've been, you know, not, this isn't your fault, I've been to that water building for the last month and a half, trying to get a receipt for my payment for water.
Yes.
And you know that.
Yes.
And I know that you've talked to the secretary how many times?
Seven.
Seven, and what happens?
You apparently never got your receipt.
I never got a receipt.
You never talked to me about a receipt?
Yes, I've talked to you numerous times, talked to you.
Do not sit there and lie, you have never asked me for a receipt.
All right.
You're lying.
Sounds like something that could be easily resolved, does it not?
But anyhow, without getting a phone call, I don't know of situations going on out in the system, if somebody has an lack of water pressure or not, we need phone calls, we need to, so we can do our jobs properly.
I understand.
That's it.
Just another question in for you, after you get done talking, Joe. How much better is it compared to before? These guys done all the hydrant flushing, et cetera, all kinds of.
From the previous board and the operator, it is a thousand times better.
Then what was the main culprit?
Pick one.
That made it get better.
Well, you got rid of the board, you got rid of the operator, they kept everything secret, you know?
How, how much better is the water, you said a hundred percent better?
Hundred percent.
What's wrong with the water back then?
Wasn't got proper the doses right, well, they wasn't doing their jobs.
Wasn't the hydrants flushed enough or the system or whatever?
No, you can't flush hydrants in a drought, you were sitting on the board, Joe, you know how this works, quit being stupid.
All right.
Well, I wanted to get to the bottom of it, see what your answer was.
That should be at the water.
Yes, I mean. Okay, good?
I'm done.
Howie, you didn't have anything, correct? Donovan, do you have anything? Fran, we're gonna go right here in the front and then move back.
Yeah, I, I have one question.
Okay.
We waited for four months for this amount, okay, and four or five months whenever this man came to the water company and the storage company. So, when did this, when did you actually send this to the township, sir?
I don't remember.
I think it was right before the meeting, last month.
Well, we had a meeting, um, maybe late November, sometime in November.
Well, I was wondering, because, I mean.
We had a meeting.
We just got it thrown to us at the last meeting, you know what I mean? It, no matter how we feel about it, we just got it strode to us at the last meeting, and even how we feel about it, it, uh, never once combined that we were going to switch it over to the township. As, as the boards talked about it, and, and sir, I don't know his name, but when he was at the water plant, we thought we'd wait for this price, and the water board and the storage board would merge together and make a board out of them, too. Now, as we come in here, I don't know when you got this, we come in, all of a sudden it's going to the supervisors. And the thing that bothers me there is, I'm not saying this is a good thing or a bad thing, but what bothers me is, uh, you're gonna take all the money we got and pay all the bills off, so we're not gonna have any. You have nothing left after that, you're just gonna spend two hundred and some thousand of the water authorities, and I think about a hundred and thirty, if I'm not mistaken or so, from the storage authorities.
More than that.
And, and my thing is, if we would've stayed within the boards and made a board out of both boards and joined together like we were talking, but we was all waiting for this, so then when we come to the last meeting, was it your decision to make that, or was it Highmark's decision to make that as a supervisor?
Infomarc proposal, it wasn't our decision, but it was the way that they, they.
I, I mean, I wonder why, because they told us that, because I asked that specifically, and he will verify what I asked, and I asked them whether it would be a board.
We were requested by the township.
Come on up front.
Come up front, so we can understand.
Now, would you introduce this gentleman, please?
I'm Thomas Crawl, I'm the business development director for, for Infomarc. We were requested by the township to, uh, provide proposal for operation and maintenance of the, the water and the wastewater facilities. We put in the proposal so that it couldn't be construed as we would work for two separate authorities, we wouldn't work for, we, that's not the way this proposal's set up. This proposal's set up so that we can put a crew in here, hire people, operate as a one entity, and build a township with the services. So that we couldn't, we couldn't be, we didn't want to have two masters. We didn't want to have water authority and wastewater authority that we're trying to answer to.
We wasn't gonna do that, sir, we wasn't.
Well, nobody, nobody, nobody requested a proposal, and you can, this would, if you had a combined authority, could possibly be a, a, an option, or combined authority.
Well, that's the way it just started out to be, and as we talked in a couple of different meetings that we had with the storage, that's the way that we thought this would go. And when I talked to you and I left, and he was right there with me, I asked if it's going to be, is there going to be a board? And you said most certainly, you have to merge your water and storage together and make one board. Is exactly what you said.
I didn't.
Then, no, no, he was right there.
It was something wrong with.
And when I come here, it's all changed.
Well, we have to have one entity that we review.
And that's fine, we could act, we could easily do that, and we wouldn't have to spend all that money out of our bank accounts and still keep going.
That's not, that's not my purview. My purview is to come in, provide the expertise to operate the water and the wastewater.
Well, whose, whose I D. is that? I mean, who is it?
When you, when you, yeah, when you dissolve the authorities, you're supposed to pay off as much debt as you possibly can of those authorities.
We understand that, but we wasn't talking about dissolving them before, we was gonna join.
Right, well, we had talked for months about combining, and the answer was always no, 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 no.
I know, and we waited for four months for this, every meeting we come to.
Right.
And anybody was here can say that, everybody kept asking, did you get the price back from Infomarc? And we had to keep saying, no, 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 this went on for four months, at least four months since you did it.
Well, we didn't have the, the price yet, but once we got the proposal, we reviewed it with our solicitor to find out, because those things were in the proposal.
Yeah, but you, but you already.
I mean, I understand, like, this is an aspect.
But you already voted.
They didn't want to deal with three entities, the township, the water, and the sewage.
But you already voted us all out, we're already voted out.
Right.
So there's no boards no more. We're voted out far as I can.
You're still acting as a board until.
We're voted out is last month.
Okay, there's a process to that.
Not at all.
Well, I'm just saying, was there, was there a way to keep the four boards?
That's, that's not my concern.
So that was all the supervisors.
My concern is to provide a proposal to who I was supervised by, the supervisors, and I provided them a proposal.
Well, how about if we gave you that proposal and we merged the boards?
Do you have a combined sewer authority I can give it to?
Yes, we do, we can, if we combine at any time.
You don't have it combined.
We was gonna combine.
We tried to get it combined.
We don't have it combined right now.
I only deal with a legal entity. I can't deal with some, some, you know, what's not a legal entity. That's the only thing I can work with.
The water and the storage is a legal entity.
But they're not, there's two.
Well, they can be made one just as well as given the time. Well, they're not yet either.
Decision, that decision was already made last month, you know that, you just said that.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, we were always throwing them in the box.
Because we're trying to give the community good water, a good product, we're trying to get these guys.
Wow, I feel they're on that.
Even more training than what you have, okay?
Isn't one of the points you're trying to make, Franny? It took four months to get this.
Yeah, and it's with nothing.
And now it's being rushed through.
Most certainly.
It has to be approved or not approved by the end of this month.
It's already approved.
A lot, a lot of people are not even aware of what is happening, but, I mean, I, I don't know if this is good or bad either.
I don't know.
But I feel it's being rushed and I think maybe that's one of the points.
It's, it's being way rushed right through and the boards didn't have a decision on any of this and we were waiting for this price to come back. So we seen the price and I actually left at that meeting, at the end of that meeting last month, they voted on it. So, and what I'm saying is, that's not the way I thought this would go. I thought the boards would merge and make one deal out of it and we would make the best out of the boards out of the two.
But I saw your board said it was gonna be too much money and their answer was gonna be no.
Well, we didn't have a price on the money.
Yeah, but you said, I know you didn't, but you guys all said no before you even knew.
We didn't have a price, but we don't have a choice. I mean, it's just, I'm saying.
Again, like I explained it a couple weeks ago in our last meeting, this is step one. We voted to dissolve the boards, you know that.
Yeah, that's.
Then you'll continue to act as the board and transition it.
No, you guys, you guys are gonna act as the board, you guys are the board now.
Through the transition, there's legal process that's gonna take place, okay? So you're still the board until that process takes place. We got the proposal, we reviewed the proposal, we talked to the solicitor about the proposal. This was the path forward, okay? We want better water system without consent orders. We want trained people with somebody to go to when they have a question, all right? We want the same thing at the sewer authority. It, it, it's not anything more complicated than that. And it, and it's affordable, it's there, we can afford it, it's slightly more than we're paying right now, but we, we don't have anybody to ask the questions to other than engineers and then that starts costing sixty thousand, a hundred thousand a year. So you're spending more when you get into a jam 'cause you have to go to the engineer, you have to go to the lawyer. If you look at the expenses, there's a pile of them, just an engineer and a lawyer.
If you would look at the engineer that got us in this mess in the first place, that's where you need to look.
We've had multiple engineers in the past years as a supervisor.
The last one that got us in this.
Here, I'll make one statement that shouldn't help you. We will take responsibility for what we do. So we have a violation because we did something or we didn't do something, it'll be on us. So if there's, you have to, you get consent order, we're gonna defend you and we're gonna make it right. But we're gonna have systems in place that you don't get the consent order. You're gonna have a data management system that you know that you have to have that test done and, and recorded by a certain date. It'll be, you know, flagged, if, if it's not done, it shows up in our office in Horsham with somebody that monitors it there, they get on back onto them and say, why isn't this sample taken? You know, we've got those kind of checks and balances in to make sure things get done. So you don't have, and we have experts that would've pointed out that you have to take samples, copper, lead and copper samples, corrosion samples for all your sources of water, so creek water, dwell water and the combination. We would've had that in place and done, you would've avoided a lot of the headaches.
No, they always did it in the past.
Always does, D E P, D E P doesn't care how you did it in the past.
The last engineer really put the hose to us, that's why we're in this shape. The last engineer we had really put the hose to us.
For whatever reason, it's the second consent order, my time as a supervisor. Twelve years, two consent orders, one was a million dollars, this one is the breaking point, okay? That's where it was with the supervisor, that's why we came to this decision.
What is that number, Charlie, the breaking point? This new consent order?
The new consent order, I don't know what it's gonna cost, you don't know what it's gonna cost until all the testing comes back. I mean, it doesn't even matter, when you continually, you're wasting money with lawyers, just add up what was spent on lawyers alone on this consent order, it's over ten thousand dollars, I'm sure.
They do, they say the water's real good.
That consent order came from before we had this operator.
Most certainly.
Okay. What's that? No, I don't know, well, I didn't. Okay, we go on.
Okay.
Okay. Franny, thank you. Do you have anything?
No.
Okay, go on to the second row, Jim.
Hi, Franny.
Yes, sir.
I have a couple things to go.
A what?
My name is.
Oh, thank you.
As Franny, Danny, the excess money that the sewer and water authority is going to manage that money.
The money that's, that would be left over after the contract from year to year?
Yes.
Will stay in the account devoted to water and sewer. So for.
This question was, who's gonna manage that money?
The account, it'll be an account here at the township. Are you asking, we'll have a secretary.
Yeah, are you going to have someone, a financial manager to manage that money?
No, it's the same, it's just gonna be the regular account, like we have one right now for water and one for sewer. Each authority has their own account. There'll just be a separate account here.
Those accounts are not in the township, are they?
They will be under the township's control, but they will be devoted to water and sewer.
Yeah, there'll be a secretary.
And there'll be a secretary that manages that, that affairs that.
So you're creating another job.
And you're going to, the township's gonna pay the secretaries and the billing and all that, the township is gonna have to pay you that, right?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
And, I don't know, I read that in, I didn't read it, I read Jimmy, okay? That they're going to have a, offer management assistance, okay? So, if they're going to manage the whole thing, why do they have to assist the managers here at the township?
There's no manager here at the township, there'll be a secretary, a part-time secretary like we have now that'll handle billing and collections and customer calls and callouts for the guys to mark their one calls or if there's a problem in the system, that kind of, the stuff our secretary's already doing now at water and sewer, okay? There'll just be one instead of two. You follow, follow that? Okay, the management end of it on, in their proposal is strictly on their end of it, so he can explain that. It has nothing to do with us.
Our management is making sure the reporting's done, making sure the employees are, are, you know, are reporting to work, you know? Everything needs to be done in operation and maintenance. We do not get involved in the billing, we do not get involved in managing the money, we just do the operation and maintenance. We have an account for a budget in our proposal for maintenance, we will give you, every month, you'll get a monthly report with line items of where everything was spent. And that budget is really just a budget, so at the end of the year, if we don't spend it all, it goes back to you and if we spend more, you know, we get reimbursed. But you get a detailed line item of where, where that money was spent every month.
I have a question.
Without looking at this. What's that?
If you don't have enough money, turn to the township, the township don't have the money to pay. How are they gonna get the revenue to pay you if you went over budget?
But, I don't know, I'm just gonna point out, anything over, I think it was five thousand dollars, it was a dollar amount.
Right.
Anything five thousand dollars or more would have to be approved through the township.
Right, then it could be.
So we're not, they're not just gonna go spend a bunch of money that we don't know about and then we owe them extra money. For one. For two, accounting for all the things that we need to account for on our end, there'll be a hundred and forty thousand dollars in that account every year, roughly, roughly. Now, giving, if there's something major that goes on in the system, that's what that money is for. I mean, that's just how my numbers come out. Was that, did I cut you off?
No, no.
That's your point of view.
Well, it's, it's a, the maintenance we do, so the maintenance that the, the staff at the plant does is not charged to that budget. So if the budget is for replacement valves, uh, somebody come in and calibrate the meters, things like that, specialty items, specialty electronics, electricians if we, you know, we have to go to high end. But all the day-to-day maintenance is done by the staff. And the only comes, the only money that comes out of that budget is for basically what's out of pocket for us. You get to buy through us, which gives you a very substantial discount because we have national accounts with people like Hawk and USA Blue Book and things like that. So we, we've negotiated special rates 'cause we run three hundred some facilities around the country.
Globally also.
Nope, only in the United States.
Okay.
So you get, you get, you get to take advantage of that, that specialty pricing. 'Cause we'll, you know, we'll purchase it through us, pass it through on the, on the, on the budget.
Your website, I mean, it's here, if you ever tell me, put help all over the state, where are you gonna find the people at?
It's, it's, it's a tight market, I won't lie to you, it's a tight market. But we offer, we offer a career that has, you know, opportunities. So somebody starts here, gets their, we, we pay them to get their licensing, we pay the bonuses, you know, when they do that. We, we could land another account or we have an opening somewhere, they have an opportunity to, to advance their career. So it's a, it's a real career with Infomark.
What is your prevailing wage?
It's, it's a local wage. That we don't, prevailing wage is a, is a set by the government and, you know, that's not, doesn't apply to us.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
What's your nearest customer to Jay Township, these guys handle right now?
Evansburg.
Evansburg? I heard rumors, something about Driftwood Cinema Homing, are these guys going to?
No, the, the, our project manager has a cabin cinema home. So he put up an ad, we, we, we start, you know, we wanted to see whether, yeah, and he, we have to have, for Indeed, you have to have a location. So when somebody asked him, he said, put cinnamon honing, have a hat and address for Indeed.
I guess we're gonna get that job, huh?
What's that?
Now, this is the first time you've been here tonight?
No.
Oh, you've been here before, how many times?
This is third trip or fourth trip.
And you conversed with which board member every time?
Uh, we did a tour of both facilities and a couple of board members were at the water plant. I don't know that there are any board members at the wastewater.
And how many sewers?
No, but they didn't call.
Look, I was, I was asked by the township supervisor.
That was your secretary.
That's, that's not, it's who they call is not my concern.
Yeah, don't be a little guy.
Uh, yes. Wait, I, I didn't quite, okay, Jim, we answered yours, sorry, I don't know.
No question.
Okay.
I'm just figuring out what's going on.
Okay, go ahead, Christine, it's up to you. Okay, it's you, Christine.
Actually, this meeting tonight is going rather orderly, I'm, I'm surprised, but I've been to so many meetings that there's three or four people trying to talk at the same time, people talk out of order. So I'd like to suggest that you put some mannerisms into these meetings. After the public comment period, everybody's done commenting. I'd like to see if anybody has a question after that, that they raise their hand. And, more importantly, no one is to be interrupted while they are trying to talk. And if anyone does that, then I suggest you get dramatic and call them out of order. So, um, you think that's something that we could do at these meetings?
I think so, I do think so.
Well, that would be nice, thank you.
Okay, that's, that's pretty good.
Well, um, along with, since Joe brought it up about their clients, I went into your website and there's one topic, clients, and I clicked it, but nothing comes up. It just refers back to your homepage.
All right, I'll have to check on that.
But anyway, I've put in three calls to your company. None of my calls have been returned.
Yeah, there's, most of the people were on vacation last week.
I understand that, but vacation's over. And I asked the person who was in charge of this area and she didn't know. So I looked up your proposal and I found out it was Mr. Sobo, so I called back and gave her the information which she emailed to him and I still haven't heard from. So I guess he has a long Christmas vacation, but I know you have Evansburg. Do you have any other clients in northwestern Pennsylvania?
We have the Johnstown Redevelopment Authority, we operate the wastewater plant, we operate the wastewater plant with Johnstown Redevelopment Authority. At the city of Johnstown and all the surrounding area.
But you don't have any smaller in this category like us?
Not in this area. Evansburg, we go down in eastern Pennsylvania, we have none.
How many?
Uh, how many clients? Nationwide, three hundred something, three hundred some. Uh, in Pennsylvania, let me see if I can name them all. Evansburg, Johnstown, Downey Town Area Authority, Littles, Penn Township, Lancaster County, Boyertown, Pennsylvania, Bristol Township, Pennsylvania. I think that's it.
What was the one in Lancaster?
Penn Township.
Okay, um, and Bristol Township?
Bristol Township is, yeah, it's on the eastern side of the state.
Um, I guess, this is a question not only for you, but your supervisors. I was wondering why you didn't ask maybe for a three-year proposal instead of five? So we could try this out for three years and see if it's workable.
Uh, yeah, I think you, five is your standard.
We re-offered five. Everything's negotiable.
It doesn't have to be five though.
No, but your, your prices, your, your prices based on a five-year contract.
Right.
That's the, the, our costs are advertised over five years of starting this up, getting things up and running.
I have a lot of questions from the customers in this area. More customers than you could imagine, that's why they put me in the seat here, I appreciate it, thanks. But we should work a little bit more slowly and go through this more thoroughly so that people understand what's happening to their water and sewer systems.
That's, that's not me.
That's not you, that's us, right here.
That's the board here, and we've already started the process, Joe.
Okay.
Yeah, but the people aren't happy with your process. I don't start it, you started it.
Did, did any of you supervisors call any of these smaller clients?
I did not, no.
I did not either.
Didn't call anybody, okay. Now, previously you said, there's a water authority meeting this Thursday at six o'clock, that's your reorganization and then it'll follow with the Legener meeting. And then the sewage authority is a week later, the thirteenth, six o'clock. You previously said you were gonna send your attorney to these next two authority meetings.
No, no, I mean, she will be sending them information on how to proceed. But that, like I said, it's business as usual until this all works through. She's not coming to the meetings, I, we never said she was coming to the meetings.
Okay, I must have misunderstood, so no, nobody from Infomark is gonna go so people on the sewage and water authority can ask questions about the proposal? Do they even have the proposal, a copy of it?
Some have got copies of it.
I got a copy and I wrote.
So nobody's gonna go?
The proposal, no, they have copies of the proposal, we're talking about it here, again, in the public meeting, just like we did in last public meeting. It's now between the township and Infomark is where we're at, Christine.
I understand, but I'm just saying, there's only one person here from the water authority and.
There's four, four of us are here from the water.
I mean, board members.
Two of us.
Uh, and, and the water authority in two each. Wouldn't it be nice to give them an opportunity to ask questions about the proposal that you're going to approve, maybe at the end of the month?
I think they've already, they've already asked questions about the proposal, have you not? I mean, they're more than welcome to ask any questions they want to us.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Jim, I'm trying to move through, what do you have, bud?
I was gonna ask, is there any possibility that you could put these authorities in escrow rather than dissolve them? Okay, let them sit dormant just in case you do wanna come back through?
No, I mean, we can just. Right, I mean, it's been, that's the decision that's already been made, you're asking to go a step back, that's not what we're doing. Okay, moving on, sorry, Rick's next, you're good, Rick, okay, Bob?
Yeah, you made reference to accounts, there'll be a water and sewer account. My understanding from when I read, you have to keep the water money separate from the sewer money. You cannot co-mingle these funds and I think that's a matter of law.
Well.
No, wait, let me finish, please. From that aspect, you have people that are water subscribers that don't use the sewer and conversely, you have people that are sewer subscribers that don't use the water. And, you know, just on its surface, it's unfair to a water customer to, if he's solely a water customer, to subsidize the sewer and conversely, it's unfair to somebody that's solely in the sewer to finance the water. And I asked this question in Houston Township. I talked to, I believe her name was Gail, but she said they have to maintain two separate funds and this gentleman from Houston, perhaps he could shed a little light on it. But I think it's a matter of law, you cannot say that this is money for both of them, you can't co-mingle these funds.
Well, question, that came up in our discussion with the solicitor, she's looking into that. But if that's the case, that's fine as well because he has a breakdown for water and sewer. We've already, he's already given me the numbers for water and sewer, the request that was one of the questions we asked. So there would be a breakdown of how much that contract is for each. So therefore, we may have to have two accounts and say, well, this much goes to here and this much goes to there, simple sentences.
Then, how, it's gonna be, I'm not sure how they're gonna manage the employees. They're paying the employees directly, is that correct?
Yeah, the employees.
Okay, when they invoice the township for anything, they're gonna have to be specific which account this is drawn on. Is it drawn from the water account or is it drawn from the sewer account?
No, we have a contract that'll break down how much is charged to the water and how much is charged to sewer. It doesn't matter where, where the employees are put, it's what you could charge.
Okay, if they have to make up some money at the end.
That's up to the township?
Pardon me?
That's up to the township, that's not me.
Well.
We have a contracted price and it'll be broken out for water, for what's for sewer and if, where I can see would be maybe an issue, you have a major line break in the water line, it costs a lot to have it fixed, that's gonna come out of your maintenance.
water line, it costs a lot to have it fixed, that's going to come out of your maintenance budget. When that maintenance budget is over, that's going to come from the water.
That would have to come from the water funds though.
Right. Just as if it would do if you were in the water.
And it is a question we've already asked this solicitor, and we're waiting for that response. But either way, that's why we have it broken down.
Okay, but I know for a fact, I was told in Houston Township, they have to maintain two separate funds. And based on that precedent, I believe that's probably the answer you're going to get.
It could be. It's, we'll, that's what I mean, there's a lot of little details to work out, but those are.
Well, I mean, I can see that being a pitfall.
Okay. Anything else, Bob?
Uh, I don't.
Keith?
Yeah, was there only one proposal for this managery that we got going on here?
Yep.
You don't have to go out and get any other proposals when you have to on any other thing you buy?
It's professional services. Falls under professional services. Question is passed. Anything else?
No.
Okay.
You got the ball rolling down the mountain.
Got anything?
Yeah. Who's the Tom DeSantis, the other guy, since we're still visiting comments? In the beginning, it was Russ Braun and someone else.
We always have an alternate just in case Russ isn't available, but Russ gives us his name, I don't even know, we've never had to use him, but where's he from?
Warren.
Warren?
I just never heard the name.
There's hardly any SEOs around.
Yeah, right. That's what I was wondering.
He was willing to take the alternate, but like I said, I don't think he's ever done a sewer system for us. Yeah. Okay. John?
Yeah, I've got a couple of things. Maybe one. About the local and existing employees, what's their status with your company?
They're the first, the first, our first, they're our go-to for employees. We don't have employees sitting on a shelf waiting for a job.
Their job's pretty safe. We have to apply.
Yeah, they have to apply, they have to, we have requirements, drug screen is one of them.
Background check.
Background check.
No, that's standard.
Yeah, so that's the standard for this, yeah.
That's about all I have.
Are you accepting other applications?
We always accept applications because in a situation like this, there may be people that's just deciding now, I don't want to, I don't want to come to InfraMark, and we can't be sitting here holding the, holding the bag. So we have, you know, we're recruiting all the time. And the market right now, to be honest with you, is very tight for water and wastewater operators. So we, we try to know where they are, we'll know if he's in the vicinity if, if, if somebody decides to take another job, we've got a replacement kind of lined up already. Or, you know, at least we know about it.
All right, I think that's the end of visitors' comments. So, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to the approval of the bill. Probably Joe should come and review it if somebody's going to be paid before your time. But, oh yeah, they're always that expensive, which has an elected auditor. Okay, we need a motion to approve. Are there any questions on the bills?
Warren overhead door.
Warren overhead door. You have a problem with this door out here? Yeah, what did they do to that, Jamie? Put some new latches on it or something, one of these doors in the garage. Say on that.
Didn't I see, wasn't there one on last month's bill about a door or two?
Yeah, there was two different people calling, two different items of work done, not, one not knowing the other was coming. But they both did some repairs, so there was some confusion there with the guys. We told them in the, in the future, make sure they only have one person coming. Okay. Okay, any motion to approve the bills? I'll make a motion to approve. All second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. Treasurer's report.
Valancing of general fund as of December sixteenth was a hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eight dollars ninety-five cents, balanced as of, that's supposed to be a one. January third, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two, a hundred thousand four hundred and eighty-three dollars seventy-seven cents. State fund balance as of December sixteenth was one hundred and eleven thousand sixty-one dollars sixty-four cents. Balance as of January third was one hundred and eleven thousand seventy-two dollars fifty-nine cents. Plague it. Balance as of January third was thirteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-two. Capital reserve balance as of January third was a hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars. State fund CD balance as of January third was forty thousand six hundred and fifty. General fund CD balance as of January third was eighty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. The balance, or the deposits for the two weeks was nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents.
Correspondence? No correspondence. Road maintenance and equipment maintenance are there? Are there any questions on those? Kind of been less than a while, right? Move on to old business. Flood issues, Kersey Run. Nothing's changed in the last two weeks. We haven't been able to spring to get set up for our summer projects there.
What's, what part of Kersey Run?
This one that we're trying to do this summer will be like right behind Leonard's Garage over there on two fifty-five. And the neighbor above that signed an agreement. It'll be a couple splash dams like over at the senior center.
Right, so nothing up towards our end?
No. I, we had talked about that originally, and if we get some more funding, you know, that was an option to do something up there. It's just they didn't have anything ready at the time when we got that original funding. But you, are you having trouble with that anything?
Well, no, I just wanted to make sure we had an issue.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I mean, we were talking about, like maybe before the last time you rebedded it, that we were going to do some work for you up there through that grand. But we couldn't get it all put together.
I'm almost positive you need to rebed.
Okay. All right, we'll keep that in mind. When he's coming in the summer, I'll get ahold of you, or the spring, and we can kind of talk about it, maybe go out to the site and look at it and see what would be helpful. All right, no. Okay, any other questions on flood issues, Kersey Run? Combining the water and sewer boards in InfraMark, I think we've talked about that one at length. Anybody else? Kellamy Pike Bridge.
Um, do you mind? The bridge, I ordered, what was that? The bridge will be posted for a sixteen ton weight limit with all the current posting locations. And a bridge limited to one truck sign must be installed at each approach. I have the signs ordered, as soon as they're up, I take pictures, we can remove the cones and it can be done at the sixteen ton.
Double lane and double truck.
Correct.
Yeah, one truck at a time is the limit, other than that it'll be two lanes.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Yes.
Yeah, they said nineteen in the original, the official word from PennDOT was only sixteen.
I was waiting, I kept asking her what I could go.
Signs are ordered. We're going last week.
So as soon as they come in, we'll get it posted, we'll have to take anything off the bridge until they're probably just coming.
No heavy loads over sixteen.
Yeah, it's a little better than where it was at eleven. Yeah.
Six was down two, wasn't it?
Eleven.
Eleven, yeah. Okay. Obviously, there's more repairs to be done on that bridge this summer. Orders update? Nancy, anything?
Uh, yeah, things have been a little slow over the holidays. I do have a few things. I've really been kind of hearing things, people have been telling me on the street. I want to remind people that they need to come and fill out a form at the township and then it will be forwarded to me. I have to have a form signed by the residents before I can do anything. Okay.
You skipped one, I think. Um, I did, I'm, I'm sorry, we crossed that off, it was a, it was a typo. D C and O R, the Kellamy Pike Railroad has already been done as Jamie was setting it up. I don't know. It doesn't belong there, I'm sorry. Yes, John?
I have one quick question. What's the status on the demo of the old Dululo sewer?
Yeah, Bucktail Excavators got the bid and they are currently tearing down the last of the coiled up in St. Mary's. And this is supposed to be the next stop on their list.
Okay.
I've been up past it a couple times, it looks like it's cleaning up pretty quick. So hopefully soon.
And also the quality to the rate of the, to look at the building. Ryan bought that other piece of mountain wood.
Oh, yeah. I think he had, I don't quote me on that, but he told me he talked to Bucktail about cleaning up that junk that's left there and, and paying him for that part of the cleanup. So I think he's waiting on our project, you know, maybe to kind of do it all at one time. But yeah, he got the trailer out there for the porches and all the junk that's still laying around. Okay. Anything else Nancy, on the update?
Oh, no.
Okay. Um, greater on municipal is until February eighth, right? Security camera quotes?
You're going tomorrow, right?
I only got the one advance, he just came down.
I've probably gone and done what I think tomorrow.
They haven't given me a quote back yet.
He only recommended three, he said six.
Why isn't it for people to do? It's. Why are they sitting right there?
He's ours.
He works for us. He has the ability, doesn't he?
He's, I also gave her another name, Jeff May, will get ahold of the company, they did the, uh, over the junkyard over there. Nobody's, they've made it, it's all there, he's pretty reasonable, that's it. So there's at least three options to get some quotes there, but we'll still wait. But I think that's, well, I think we can look into doing them ourselves. I said that at the last meeting, but we'll talk to the guys about that, see which one's going to do it.
He's going to set it up and I'm.
He's going to set it up in here, that's the service that we need. But that's, right now, we don't have anything to make a decision on any of it, you know, how to do quotes. But we can talk about that between now and third week of February.
I guess we'll have to.
Yeah. Okay. New business, repository property purchase application.
One twenty-five Kennedy Street.
One twenty-five Kennedy Street. It's just a garage on, on a lot on Kennedy, and the offer's five hundred. How, you already approved their end of the offer, or are they waiting here?
They're waiting for us.
Waiting for us.
Question, question. Yes, 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 yes.
You said that's a garage by debtor lines?
Yeah.
Okay. But isn't something happening with that house too?
Joe did some research on this, he can.
I spoke with the party involved.
Why?
The house, because I'm supervisor, that's why. Because he's going to go out and rehabilitate the house and he wants to rehabilitate the garage to bring them back into code again.
Who's he?
The party responsible for buying the place. I don't know if a lot of say his name or not.
Yeah, you can say his name, it's here at a public meeting.
Yeah, it's right here on the.
Dmitri?
Get a coffee, that's.
Oh, Dmitri?
Yeah, Dmitri.
Okay, because I was just about ready to take that house.
He's going to restore it.
So apparently, he's entered into an agreement to buy the house with the owner. But this piece of property is separate from the house, and so he's bidding on this to be retarded and taken by the county.
Okay.
Okay? So that's, that's our understanding of it, yeah?
That's correct. Yeah, I'm in agreement with the rehabilitation and demolition. Let him fix it.
You want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion and we let.
Except for the ones that were. All in favor?
Dmitri could fix them up.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
All in favor, fix it up. Can you sign something on this?
No, I'll email the guy back.
Well, she has to get ahold of them, you know, let them know what's going on. She recommended demolition.
And this will work. We'll all have to sign off on this repository property, it's all hats and bodies. Okay, anything else, need a motion with your attorney? I'll make a motion with your attorney.
All second.
All in favor? Aye.